And as you know, the meeting will be recorded and posted to YouTube and other social media platforms. By participating in the meeting, you understand the recording could contain your video screen, stream, scream, whatever, or audio scream, including images of yourself or anyone in the room with you. If you choose to enable your video or audio device during the meeting, as well as anything or anyone else that may be in the background could be recorded. This recording could include any opinions you contribute and anything you say about yourself. On occasion, chat with the meeting could also be captured in the meeting recording. Therefore, anyone attending this recording meeting may have aspects of their personal data recorded if they actively participate or not. Yay, so forth. Okay. Start off with approval of minutes. I hope we have an approval of minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, do we have a second?
Mrs. Thompson is the only other committee member
I second.
present.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, good deal. Hi. Okay, so we have that done now. I was at a basketball game the other day. And those of you who are familiar with the process know that frequently they have a little food booth next to the stairs. And I get to meet this delightful young fellow over here. Tell us your name again.
My name is Riley Moore.
Riley Moore. And yours?
Luke Salvador.
Luke Salvador. Oh, it's wonderful, I have a Salvador. There's always a Salvador somewhere around. Adds to the ambiance of the situation. Anyway, he was telling me about DECA, which is a business club. We have business education program in this school. Did you know we had a business program?
I don't know too much about it.
No, I didn't either. Is Peggy there?
Peggy is here.
You're blacked out, Peggy.
I am, I am.
Did you know we had a business program?
I kind of remember a little bit of talk about trying to do something different in different areas.
Well, anyway, this young fellow was telling me about there's a business program and they were raising money for that program and they're going to go to Boston, right? Four of you?
Three, three.
Okay, four of them or three? Three, four, three, okay. Are going to an assembly or a gathering or some such? And it really sounded interesting, so I did a little bit further. And Jess? There's not much to look at tonight. But anyway, Jess told me some of the courses that we have and it really sounded interesting. So I asked that they come before us so we could find out just a little bit more. So do I turn it over to you, Teresa, or do I turn it over to them?
Yeah, I'm just going to give a little introduction as to how it started at Quabin and then the boys are going to share what DECA has meant to them so far in their experience for each of them. Okay, so this
Let me know when, I didn't mean to interrupt, but let me know when you would like the presentation.
Sure.
Shared, huh?
Yeah. Okay, so Jason Bergman is a new teacher within our business program at the high school. And it was his doing bringing DECA to the high school. He did all of the legwork. I am his co-advisor, so I'm assisting him. Jason couldn't be here tonight. They have a little newborn at home, so he's home. But we started this chapter at Quabin in November with 10 members. And the, out of the 10 members that we just started with, eight of them went to the DCU Center in January and competed at the district conference. When you compete at the district level, you take an exam in your area of specialty. So we have classes at Quabin, hospitality and tourism, marketing and retail, entrepreneurship. So the students chose a category based on a business course that they had been enrolled in. And they took a test and then while at the conference, they role-played with members of the business community. So business members came to the conference and they were provided a script 10 minutes before walking into the room. And they had to read the business scenario and role-play with the judges and basically show their business knowledge within their area. Each of the students competed against at least 100 other students within their category. And we are proud to say that out of the eight students that we brought, three are moving on to the state competition, which will be in March in Boston. And we were the smallest chapter there. Some schools brought far more students. But having initiated this club and within two months to have our kids score so well, Jay and I are really proud of the kids, so.
Well, I'm really proud of them too. That's why when you were telling me, I thought this is information we should have as school committee members. We should know about this because this is a little town and there's some businesses. I have, I have a bunch of businesses, but I'm gradually shedding them. But it's very interesting because I didn't have any business background or knowledge. Old Barry High School didn't have a business program.
Well, one of the things that chapters are asked to do, that this was our first year we weren't required to do, but next year when we go back to districts, we're supposed to bring three business people with us as judges. So maybe you'd like to come with us next year.
Whatever seems appropriate.
Excellent. So do you guys, whoever wants to start, do you want to talk a little bit about your experience?
Um, I think DECA for me has been a good experience because it was my first opportunity to experience a, um, a real like business formal event. Uh, we had a, when we went to districts, we had to dress up nice. We had to act our best, you know? And, but it was also a good opportunity to see that. All of the business world seems intimidating. There's a lot of good people. It's, yeah, it's a lot of good people, I think.
Um, for me, it was a really good experience. Not just from the district's point of view, but just overall, like what DECA has meant for me. I was like a very, very, very last minute decision. I wasn't sure if it was for me or not because, um, as I talked with Ms. Wuha, I am very interested in aviation, but also lately I've been, you know, looking at uh, business as like a possible career path. And DECA has really like given me a lot of like tools to like learn more about it and see what it's really about. And obviously, I mean, um, we're not going to be role-playing all these different types of situations, but it really was like a really good experience of what the real world, what the real world could be like. And, um, it was like interviewing, it was like a interview wing type of feel. It was like very, it was like very nerve-wracking, but like it was like after I was done, like this, I'll feel, I'll feel like 100 times better, or I felt 100 times better. And it was like, it was like, I'm really proud of myself that I was able to do it. And, um, you know, overall, just DECA does that time and time again. And once we figured out what our test scores was, um, we were all like very ecstatic and, um, like proud of ourselves because like, you know, there's like 100 test questions in front of us. It's like a big massive test. And, um, some of them, I'm like, what the heck is this? And, um, you know, to like, for us to succeed for our first year, it felt like very, very rewarding. And, um, I think, I think it's something that, I'm only sophomore and I'm going to be in it for the next two years. And I really think it's something that we can keep on building and keep on expanding. And, um, you know, as we learn for states, there's like so many opportunities to get there and there's so many opportunities to like excel and like find something you're passionate about. And I'm just really excited about like DECA right now and DECA in the future.
Yeah, that's, that's terrific. I can't tell you how pleased I am, Teresa, to have this program in our school.
Yeah, we're excited. And the state competition is March 9th to the 11th. So we'll be going, um, overnight. Um, it's a three-day event. And if kids place there, their next stop would be Orlando, Florida to the international conference, so.
They skip national and go right to international, huh?
They do, yeah. It goes district, state, and that, um, international. Because it's, um, worldwide, so there's other countries that would be at this Orlando event. Yeah.
Boy, that's good. What kind of, do either of you have a particular kind of business you're interested in?
Um, well, our category, um, both of us, our category, um, like what we were tested on and what we've role-played in was hospitality and tourism. So, um, yeah, that, that's basically what we, um, are like learning about and that, that's basically our business field right now. But that doesn't mean that, you know, later in life, I wouldn't like be able to adapt into something else or like marketing or something like that. I actually, I took the class hospitality and tourism. That's why I was entered into, um, that subset of categories.
Yeah, are you related to Tony Salvador?
Um. Oh, yeah, so it's my dad's uncle, I guess you just.
He was my insurance agent for a long time. He and Harriet, you remember Harriet? They, they were a team. They were quite, he was a terrific fellow. The Romeo course.
Romeo was his grandfather.
Yep.
Your grandfather. Okay, and we had or have an early level teacher, Salvador.
Edie.
Is that it?
Salvador, she's at Ruggles, I think.
Jenna.
Oh, Jenna, okay.
Jenna, yeah. There's now Jenna Potter.
Oh, okay.
Jenna Potter, okay. Okay, and any idea what, you're looking at hospitality also?
Uh, I think the reason I like going to the hospitality is it's so applicable to any number of different fields. I think there's going to have to be some human-to-human interaction, anything I want to do. So I think it's a solid foundation to build on top of.
Yeah, that's good. Any questions? Peggy? As time went on, I, I started with one business and then I probably had five or six at one point and now I'm cutting back. But I had two rules of business. The first one is just common sense, do good. What you do should make the world a better place and it should be well done. Second rule that I had, I've never seen anywhere in textbooks, seminars, forums, DCU centers or anything. That's take care of your friends. And that sounds like a strange one. But as you think about it, if you're working with somebody, taking care of them, helping them, supporting them, uh, I think is a good thing. I had a friend down in Atlanta, used to coach junior high level basketball. I go down and help him coach sometimes. I had a friend in Oklahoma City whose daughter was softball. I used to go when she was in the tournaments. I'd go and, you know, go in the tournaments and go where they were. So I think that always kind of worked for me. Okay, we don't have any more on this DECA? And you guys need to go do homework, is that the, is that the deal?
Or at least get sleep.
Okay, you don't have to go do homework.
No.
You already did it.
That's right.
Years ago. Well, gentlemen, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you for having us.
And I hope that you will keep us updated in future. Are you a senior?
Uh, yes, I am.
And next year, what's your plan?
Uh, don't have one at the moment, if I'm being honest.
Well, let's, I was, I used to do marketing. And I always thought my job was to be two to five years ahead of the company. Our main business was doing teacher licensing testing. So people that were going to teach in the public schools in Massachusetts or New York or California or Florida or Texas or whatever, you know, we have the MCAS, you guys know about that. Well, this test would make sure that the teachers knew the content that they were to teach you in order to achieve a success on the MCAS, which means the colleges had to teach them. So that was, that was sort of the kind of thing I was doing. But I, I had to look out ahead and know what was coming and have a notion and so forth. So I always found that that was, that was useful. And because I know you, there's a marketing course too, right?
Mm-hmm.
So that's always, not just charts and graphs and all that sort of stuff, but looking out ahead and seeing where you're going and what's the world going to look like. I was fortunate, my father-in-law was vice president of mobile. Now, it's ExxonMobil now, but when he was vice, it was just mobile. You notice how mobile, the mobile sign has a red O in it? My father-in-law put that there. And he used to talk about going and talking to Congress. He was in charge of energy in the eastern half of the United States if there was ever a disaster. So he would, you know, I get to see his, when he was reporting to a subcommittee in Congress and also. That can be really interesting stuff. Business, it's not just accounting and personnel and so forth. It's really, how do you make the world a better place and do it well? And taking care of people along the way, my opinion. Well, thanks a lot for coming.
Thank you.
And Teresa, thanks for bringing me.
Thanks.
Okay. Bullying and bully prevention. I believe that's your next thing.
Yes, um, you have that in your packet. I'll pull it up on the screen. It's just some updates that we need to comply. Dr. Camione really has been working on this. Um, it's, some of these recommendations come out of a, an audit that she recently completed and I will let Kristen, if she's there, speak to it. I can pull up the.
Uh, yeah, I know, I gave all the edits to Jess. And sorry, I'm just not, uh, so she redlined it. She made a copy of the changes so people could see the language that they asked us to change in it. Uh, I think we also changed the policy. There were some parts of the school committee policy. So the plan is included with the policy, but it's a separate document.
What's a separate document?
The, the actual bullying plan is a separate document that, um, that is attached to, this is just, this is the policy though. This is
BICFB is the policy.
Yes, BICFB.
No, I guess the policy references the bullying prevention plan, which we will make some changes with when we meet with administrators. And that is always included with the policy, but it can be modified separate. Oh, now I see it, yeah.
So the modifications here, you can see, um, just being more general on the, when it says, um, replacing the words webpage or blog with electronic medium to just again be more general, um, in terms of the types, the places where cyberbullying can take place. And then further in on page two, we are just being a little bit more clear about, um, the, the folks who are, um, involved in the development of the prevention and intervention, bullying prevention and intervention plan. So they want the words teachers, professional support personnel, school volunteers and administrators included in the policy. Then on page four.
Yeah, we can read it.
Okay.
Have we ever reported bullying to the police and criminal? Some things have ensued?
Um, I honestly, I can't answer that exactly. I don't know, but if it's necessary, we certainly do.
But it has never been necessary, do you know of?
I, I can't, I can't honestly answer that to, to, to tell you for sure one way or the other.
To your knowledge?
To my knowledge, no.
Okay, that was really the thrust of my quote.
Okay.
Okay, and then you cross out a bunch of things on the last page here, the bottom.
Uh, those are just the, exactly the legal references needed to be updated.
Yeah, the first time I read this through, it seemed like it was too broad and it was outside of just school parameters. But then you tightened it up and nicely and it, it is just related to school things. We can't control or have any, I don't know, consequences for non-school things. Committee comments or questions? Well, same with you, Peggy?
I'm good.
Okay, do we have a motion to put on the table for the school committee?
Uh, I'll make a motion that we, um, go ahead and approve the bullying prevention as amended.
Okay, Peggy, you're second, right?
I'm a second.
Okay, good. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. School facilities use regulations, are we still talking about those?
Yes.
Okay.
This is a, an update. You may remember at the last time this was discussed at the school committee level, there was some discussion around the, um, part of the regulations that required folks who will be using our school facilities to have insurance coverage, liability insurance.
$2,561 million insurance, I think.
I think it's at least a million dollars. Um, and what we, um, you asked us to do a little bit more research and to, um, come back with some additional information. So Cheryl has done some research and spoken with our insurance agent. And so we do have, um, some recommended updates to the, um, to the regulations. So I think Cheryl would probably want to speak to this. I think Cheryl's here.
Cheryl, are you here?
Good evening, everyone.
Hi.
So I was asked to contact our insurance agent relative to if general members of the public would like to use our building and what would happen if something went wrong. We were hoping that maybe there was an insurance rider we could add on to our general liability policy, but no such thing exists, I'm told from our insurance agent. So what would happen if, um, if a member of our public came in to use, let's say, our basketball court and was injured in any way? We would have to be found liable for the accident in order to be liable for, for costs. Sometimes that, that liability is easily determined. Other times, it's not easily determined. And in order for that determination to be made, more often than not, you end up in a lawsuit. So that is why this policy, um, regulation was written as it was to protect the district from something that may go wrong that we're not really responsible for. Other than that, I don't have a lot to say. I really don't have a recommendation because my recommendation is to leave the regulations as they are. But I know there are some strong feelings of the committee, so it's the committee's decision of what to do. I, I do want to tell, tell you that sometimes when this happens, we can be in a lawsuit for quite a long time. I was personally involved in one that, that was having to do with a staff member that lasted seven years. So these use, these things don't usually go away. So at the very minimum, there is substantial amount of administrative time that goes into something like this when something goes wrong.
Was that our old lunch, lunchtime guy? Is that the one you're talking about?
Perhaps.
She said perhaps. I don't think she wants.
Perhaps. All right, well, I think the thing that we were uncomfortable about or would like to gain more comfort with is a group comes in and plays basketball. And that was the very one that you were, you were citing. Can, what, what would it cost us to get a policy? Now, I know you said we can't get a rider. Can we get a separate policy to, is there any, any way around that?
No, there's no policy available for that, Dr. Allen. What we hold right now is a general liability policy. For example, a number of years ago, someone came to an event in our middle high school and they fell on the outside sidewalk. And it was pretty clear that that accident was our fault because the sidewalk was uneven. It was kind of like this and the woman caught her shoe and went down. So we had to pay her doctor's bills. Other times, it's not that easy to determine who's at fault. That falls under our general liability policy. If it's an accident regarding one of our staff members for an accident that happened on work, that's covered by our workers' compensation insurance policy. So there is no policy for the general public.
But our current policy does cover us for general public use of the facilities if something were to happen. But I think, you know, to Cheryl's point, at any, any situation like this, whether or not we have insurance coverage, there's always a possibility of a lawsuit. And that those lawsuits can go on for
Up to seven years.
Or longer. But, um, I think the, the new information that we have is that we would be covered if, if, with our general liability insurance, um, for these such occurrences. And I think that's, Cheryl, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that is on page two of the regulations where the certificate of insurance is required. I'm going to pull that up on the screen just so folks who are joining us virtually can see currently our regulations call for, you can see right here, um, anyone who would apply to use our building would need to supply us with a certificate of insurance. And this is where there were committee members who, um, you know, questioned whether
Were hoping there was another way around that.
Agreed. And, 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 you know, is this truly in line with our philosophy that we encourage the use of school facilities?
It's not. I think that's why we were asking for it to be re-examined.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we need to reach out to the towns as much as we can. We need to encourage them as much as we can to, to feel they have a place in the facilities.
So I think, you know, it is, I think it would not be, um, causing greater liability for the district if we eliminated this clause in the, um, in the guidelines.
Sheila? I wouldn't agree with that at all. I, I would say that if, if at the very most, this would not be required for general members of the public, but I do not think that we should let go of this for the other, the three groups that are identified as rental group categories just below that paragraph, especially for businesses that are using our building. Um, if they're making a profit, raising money in our building, I don't think that this should be waived for that. I think we should cover ourselves as much as we can. I think you'll remember that Mr., um, Mr. Nutter said that he has a softball league that he runs. And they're required to have a million dollar insurance policies to use the fields that they play on. I think it, just the administrative time alone, if anything goes wrong with all of these different categories, I think we should still protect the district. If, if it's agreed that general members of the public who want to use our facilities are exempt from needing to provide the certificate of insurance, I think we could add another group onto the categories because the general public is not in any of those three categories as they are defined. And then they could be added to the scheduling of groups by adding them to the end of the list of, uh, groups that we have. There's five, six different groups that get preferred scheduling. Um, I think we could add it to there, but I wouldn't suggest removing the clause completely.
Well, I think since we're hearing different perspectives, this is okay with you, Jenna. Let's have Sheila and Cheryl kind of put their thoughts together and come back to us next time on what you think. and come back to us next time on what you think would, you, you know the feelings of the school committee. And you know what your business obligations are. So if you could come back to us, it looks like we're going to have to have another.
Yes.
Meeting sometime. So you, you, would you go along with that Peggy?
I agree with you. I mean, I think Cheryl is right. Another category is probably the best avenue to go with.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think you guys are doing a great job and not just, and really digging in and finding out how best we can come up with what we would and the public would find most appropriate. Okay, so let's put that one aside for now.
So we'll draft something for the next meeting.
Yeah, and I'm assuming it's going to be related to that paragraph and those things. Well, it sounds to me like Cheryl is right when she says, let's not get rid of the organizations, but whatever we can do to encourage the public and enable them to use our facilities. Okay, so that's that one. School improvement plans. I don't have anything on that.
Oh, you didn't get copies of this one? Oh, they're in your folder.
Well, it doesn't give me much chance to look at them.
Well, we have presentations. The elementary principals have worked on their plans together and they are prepared to provide an overview of their school improvement plans. And so you have, in your folder, you have a copy of each plan for each of the elementary schools and a presentation. And then Mrs. Marias is going to present the middle high school plan.
Okay. So.
We'll start with the elementary principals and I'm going to just pull up the presentation first.
Are these all, all the, they're separate? Who started, who's going to go first?
I'm going first.
Okay, give me one second, Mrs. Worthington, just to make sure that I have the presentation up and running here for you. Okay.
So the, the four of us worked on our school improvement plans together back in the summertime, during our summer time, our summit time, not our summertime. And you'll see that, that we have four strategic objectives. And for the most part, each school has the same objectives and initiatives in their school improvement plan. They may be just a little bit different from school to school, but overall, all of our objectives and initiatives are the same. So I am starting off with Quabin Pride. And when we talk about Quabin Pride, we talked about, there's a lot of great things going on at Quabin and we really weren't showcasing what we, what we have going on in Quabin for, and just tonight. Deca being, no one knew about Deca, so this, this would be a great opportunity to show the community what is going on at Quabin. A staff member was hired, I believe that was Teresa Salvador, to work on our communication with the different towns. And we started a Brandon looking at our, what, what is Quabin and what would represent Quabin? And we had surveys from parents and students that helped us to look at a new logo. And we finally, at the elementary, have come up with what we think will be our logo. I don't know if you can see that.
No, is there any, any way to enhance that?
I can shift that over. Let me see if I can make Mrs. Worthington. Let me just stop the screen share here for a moment and there you go, can you see it?
Can you get it up over those little lippies at the bottom?
There we go. All right, one more thing, okay.
Oh, Trish, you're so cute.
Mrs. Worthington, say something and it'll pop up in the big screen here for us.
Oh, that's great.
Yes, this is a picture of me. I'm Quabin. So we, that took us a while to come up with that. The, we had, believe it or not, a lot of discussion between the principals with what we wanted our mascot to look like. And we really wanted it to reflect the middle school and high schools mascot as well. So I think, I think we've come to that decision on ours. We really need to work on getting our community into our, into our buildings as well. And that was, you know, I, I feel like we're just following up on what Cheryl was presenting about having people use our schools and, and our gym. We need to strengthen our partnership with the Barry Gazette and Teresa Salvador, who you met earlier, has been running different stories about each of the schools and what's been going on in the schools. At the beginning of the year, each of us met with Teresa and kind of just explained why we were unique. Each school was unique and what we'd like to, to see happen in our, in our schools. Not just only the sports, but all sorts of different events that happen in each of our schools. When we started talking about this, we realized that many of us in each of the schools had different traditions that we really wanted to hang on to. So we do have different traditions in different buildings. But for the, for the most part, we have unite, unified and are really working across the district to do similar things in each of the buildings. So we are really working on our social media. All of us have Facebook pages. I need to really start working on my Facebook page, so that's my goal. Newsletters go out to parents through teachers, through the district and as well as principals. So we really, we really just want to showcase what we have going in Quabin and really try to work on different events and activities to, to show what we have. And that's Quabin Pride.
I am going to be presenting academic growth within our school improvement plans. And so we have had a really strong focus this year on ELA and math and really making sure that we're optimizing that data-driven decision-making, progress monitoring and using evidence-based supports and strategies so that we can continue to grow in both of these areas. So I'm going to break it down into the two separate areas. So in ELA, we've partnered with the Hill for Literacy to provide science of reading, training for all of our staff. And that takes place on professional development days as well as early release days. And then we have some additional trainings that we're providing as well throughout each month. So the teachers are engaging in that. And then what we do after they learn about the science of reading, we actually have implementation trainings and those are happening each month. The coaches and the, just lost my turn of that. The coaches and intervention specialists are working with the teachers to really engage them in professional development that takes what they're learning from the science of reading and allows them to connect that with the new curriculum that they're teaching in the classroom with students. In addition to that, we also have progress monitoring meetings with the Hill for Literacy where we look, learn about the different components of the data process. Teachers get about two hours of training and then the following hour, we have that time to really look at the data that we've collected in ELA. And we use a variety of data from different sources. So we've got Dibbles data that we look at, Quick Phonics Screener. We have data from our Hegarty program from pre-K to two. If needed, we have some for second grade and up for some students. And then we also have weekly and module assessments from our inter-reading program that we can look at as well to see how students are doing, what progress they're making towards their goals. And then we can create goals for them in regards to our intervention program in the schools. We have assessment calendar dates that we look at so that really guides when we are administering these assessments. And we can make sure that we're coordinating that with our progress monitoring meetings and making sure that we have the data ready to come to those meetings and be able to use that data to make decisions in that moment. Intervention support, we have across all schools each day. And then we also continue to talk about academics and what the needs are across the district within our teacher leader meetings. And then we also have coaching for our, our staff and that is for all teachers. So not just new teachers, but veteran teachers as well. And we also use the SSST process to look at students who still might be struggling and need a little bit more. We're able to create a team within the schools and come up with some more interventions and strategies to help them grow, continue to grow and then monitor that growth over time and make adjustments as needed depending on what that student requires. And then in regards to math, we also have professional development, just going to move this to my screen, trainings throughout the year for teachers. We also do math progress monitoring meetings three times a year. So we look at the data that they have collected through Reflex, IXL. We have Zern ST Math and then we have Eureka Module Assessments as well. And we're able to really look at that data to see how students are doing, where the breakdown is, where our areas of strength are. And then we can use that data to make instructional decisions for teachers in the classroom so that it impacts students so that they can continue to make growth. For some students that still may be struggling in math, we can use some of our intervention time if needed to support them as well. And then we have the other three things that are there, the teacher leader meetings, SSST processing, coaching, just like I just discussed in regards to ELA. It also applies to math.
What is outrageous love?
Oh, that's the next one.
That's probably going to come up for ACL.
Yes, ACL.
Oh, okay, I'll wait.
There we go, whoops, I went too far, let me go back. There we go.
Hey, good evening. I'm going to talk about social and emotional growth. And to answer your question, Dr. Allen, outrageous love is what we have for our school committee members. And we, in fact, that we have in return as well. This kind of comes out of the work that we're doing with Dr. Shiroki Hawley, who, if you look at the second bullet point, when we talk about culturally and linguistically responsive classroom practices. His idea of outrageous love is how do we take what students bring to us and we take their culture? How do we use that as sort of a platform to get to know them and really kind of pull them into our classrooms? So if you have an opportunity to, to read anything on Dr. Hawley, you're going to read a lot about vabbing or validating, affirming and building and bridging. So it's really taking anything that students sort of bring with them as far as their background and culture and using it to sort of strengthen the community within a classroom. So the practices associated with that are pretty similar to that first bullet point. We talk about responsive classroom strategies. So with each, there's like a lot of expectations regarding movement activities, response protocols, discussion protocols. And when we talk about our responsive classroom strategies, like in that first bullet point, when we're going through what we're expecting to kind of see and we have over the past couple of years since we've begun the training on responsive classroom is our, our educators using some sort of welcoming inclusion activity. And that could be at the beginning of the day. It could be if they see two teachers and they're transitioning to their second class after lunch. Maybe that, that welcoming activity happens as they're entering the classroom for the first time then. During the class and the lesson, we're looking for engaging strategies. And ultimately, at the end, we're looking for some sort of optimistic closure. That's sort of, those are sort of like the three signature social, emotional practices associated with responsive classroom. So we're kind of looking at, in the frame of students' time with their teacher, are, are those three items present? And I would say that some of the work that we've done with responsive classroom is kind of echoed in the culturally and linguistically responsive practices that Dr. Hal Hawley has been working with us on. That third bullet point, Shelley kind of touched on it a little bit. We talk about the district focus on the student study and support team to support academic and social emotional needs. I think previously we had some structures in place where we were supporting students. If an educator brought a student to the table and we were able to take a look at that student's data academically and design some interventions and then set some next dates where we could follow up on that. I think our priority is still there and I think we're also now including that social, emotional support in those needs. So I think we're kind of opening ourselves up in regards to the process we have for SSST. And we're encouraging staff to bring forward students who may need more support on the social, emotional needs. When we think about the building-based structures to support PBIS, again, I think when Trish opened, she, she talked about, a little bit about how we all have similar goals and then the way that it manifests in the buildings may be a little bit different. So within Ruggles Lane, what we have is we've developed a structure, we meet monthly. It's called Team Kids where we have representatives from each grade level, our guidance counselor. And our work right now essentially is designing that PBIS system that can run across the building at Ruggles Lane and really kind of planning forward. We're kind of looking at basically the next three years. Next year, our primary focus is working on expected behaviors in different learning environments and what that tier one instruction in the classrooms will look like if a student is exhibiting unexpected behaviors. What is our response to that going to be? So the Team Kids structure for us has been important to work towards developing that PBIS model. We also have a weekly meeting every Thursday morning. We call it Student Watch Team. Student Watch Team is, it kind of supports the social, emotional needs of students where we, myself and Mrs. Cranston will meet with our school nurse, Mrs. Tuttle and our guidance counselor, Mr. Wagner. And we'll bring various students to the table that we are concerned about and consider some next steps associated with supporting those students and their families. For the next bullet point, when we talk about school-wide celebrations to build and sustain school culture, I think the way that it looks at Ruggles Lane is we've sort of brought back all school meetings. I think it's something that predates myself. And I think after going through COVID, it wasn't necessarily a situation where we could have the entire school community with, inside the building pulled together. But we've been doing monthly all-school meetings on the final Friday, which we call Final Friay, which we also tie in Spirit Day. So whether it's, you know, blue and gold for Quabin or maybe it's like a color war with each different grade level coming dressed in a certain color. We try to tie in some sort of spirit day to that all-school meeting day on that final Friday. And I think in, within that all-school meeting structure, what we've tried to do is mirror, in, in the setup, we tried to mirror what the expectations are in class. So the way that we sort of hold this all-school meeting, it's about 25 minutes. But we, we review expectations, we come up with some sort of reading, some sort of share where students can, you know, talk to their elbow partners. We do an activity, something new. We do the golden dustpan now, sort of taking pride in our community, our school community and making sure that we kind of keep things tidy and clean up after ourselves. Then we have a morning message and then we send them off to class. So I think we've kind of brought in some of those elements that we're attempting to see throughout the entire building into that all-school meeting as well. Something that Joe Wyman has been helping all of us out with is the Panorama Survey. We're hoping for three administrations. And essentially, the Panorama Survey, I think, and Joe can correct me, but I think it's about 45 questions or so. I'm getting a yes, thank you, Joe. It's about 45 questions. And essentially, after we get input from students in grades three to five, it breaks it down into certain categories. So like what percentage of students, you know, it might be about challenging feelings or emotional regulation, growth mindset. So all of those questions are broken up into little batches of like three to five questions where they might feed into this larger idea. And I think for us, that provided some valuable data in designing this particular school improvement goal because it gave us some, some sort of areas that we feel like we can target based on that survey data. And I think at the end, we're always kind of assessing collective student needs for social, emotional wellbeing moving forward. I think we're at a point where we're determining a lot of next steps based on what we're seeing in our students. Well, the way they're presenting when they get off the bus in the morning, get out of their parents' car in the morning. I think we're, we're doing a lot to figure out how we can best serve students by checking in on how they are each day and, and obviously holistically just, you know, how they are throughout the course of a school year. I know that was a little bit of a crash course, but I don't know if you have any questions? I know that was a little bit of a crash course, but I don't know if you have any questions?
Oh. Thank you.
Commitment to Community is next.
Who's next?
I am going to address commitment to the community, it's a, obviously a little bit of a broader topic than the school base, but some bullet points, one of the first things we did to assess our, so under the title there, our, the actual objective is to ensure that all resources are allocated efficiently and equitably with the students' best interests. So we had the Central Mass Regional Planning Center conducted demographic survey of the district and all the holdings. You know, our goal there was to assess if we are using our spaces, our buildings, our personnel equitably and in the most efficient manner possible, obviously, we were constantly reviewing our budget needs and what do we do and how do we support the town? So that was, I'm sure you all remember because it was quite extensive and they had interviews with different stakeholders. And then we were eventually given a sort of summary and, you know, it does show that our demographic is showing our district population shrinking in and as it is, you know, it's just the time of society, we have smaller populations in schools, et cetera, so. I think that that was really important information, I don't know that we were able to use the information to really make radical changes, we still have the same structures and, and school usage facilities, but it certainly was an important step for us in reviewing whether or not there was something we were missing as a district. The second bullet talks about the administrative position and really that, we can name it as Greg Devine's position. He is really a pivotal administrator in bringing the community partnerships, finding new and creative opportunities. I don't know for revenue, but really the, the most important part, which perhaps leads to a revenue source is the helping students with career paths and opening volunteer and paid internships for QRSD students. Even at the elementary level, we have students that are involved in internships that are coming in, high school students coming down to the elementary schools to support. We have a couple of students this fall, excuse me, this spring that will be coming into work with champions and to support our after school programs. We've had other students come into work in nurses' office or work with teachers that are interested in those careers, so really important step there, supporting more than just our own little focus at schools. So the mentoring program, one of the ways that we can make sure students' best interests are at the forefront is that we are hiring skilled, really high quality, especially our, our teaching faculty and the research shows that a lot of teachers don't last past the first three years and cited as one of the reasons is often the lack of support. It's sort of a solitary, or it can be a solitary profession when you're first starting out. So we have really focused our energies into the mentoring program. Mrs. Muha is now really spearheading that program, there are, there's always been a meeting scheduled, but the meetings now are much more robust and really focused on what do our new teachers need, each has a mentor. If they're an experienced teacher that's come from another district, we still mentor them as to the the ways and the, the different things that are particular to the Quabin district. If they're a brand new teacher, their mentoring program is much stronger, it's really a Department of Ed requirement, but within that, we make sure that it's valuable for these teachers because we are taking some of their time in order for them to participate. It also serves as one of their professional practice goals so that they are really using their time to support their full scope of responsibilities as teachers. The other, the next says that we are reviewing shared personnel, personnel, excuse me, schedules and needs in the Quabin regional schools. So that's really particular to the elementary level, probably, I can't necessarily speak, but some of our, our teachers also teach at the middle school. So I'm talking about our Unified Arts teachers, our art music, PE and STEM teachers, we share them. That's a really efficient use of monies and personnel, but it's, it's taxing for them. So we spend a lot of time in the summer, Tony Brown really supports this work and we we just spend hours trying to really understand, you know, what does it mean to travel from Hubbard St. to, to Ruggles Lane? Get there, get your prep time, what if, we also have teachers this year that are teaching first period at the middle school, so their, their day starts earlier. So because our last period ends at three oh five, we had to really be creative in how we schedule those folks so that when their day starts earlier, it ends earlier as well. But they don't miss out on things like faculty meetings and extended Wednesdays and things that are really important to building that community within a school or that culture. So I have to toss a lot of credit again to Tony and Colleen on that because it was a really challenging. I guess I'll call it a puzzle, if you will. But we came up with it and it seems to be working, our teachers had to really get used to it, that we put quite a load on their shoulders to do all of this and you know, knock on wood, so far so good, they all are really enjoying the buildings that they're in and the students that they're becoming familiar with and the different cultures, so that's been a positive. And then every year as principals, we build our budgets. We have extremely collaborative discussions about what each building needs, about the resources that we have as a district and how we can best share these resources. And how are we using our, our actual funding to support and maximize student achievement? So in that process, it's a, it's a very collaborative. For instance, this year, the Cheryl and Colleen and Sheila and Nancy Landry came to talk to us as each individual school. But then as a collective group, we all move from those meetings to kind of talk about what we learned and what can we do and kind of creative problem solving. So a lot of important things and these are all how we, we strengthen that commitment to the community because we really believe that, that we have a responsibility to have the best possible schools we can with the most efficient budget for our towns to support. And if you guys have any questions about any of these goals, again, as has been said, we each have our own school improvement plan, but with, and the goals are all the same, we, we build these from the district strategic plan, so they're being rebuilt now. We are in the process of re, redoing our strategic plan for the district, so then we rebuild our strategic plans based on those, so each schools might be a little different, you have them in your folders, I believe, but the bulk of the work is extremely collaborative and collaborative, it's in the same across all schools.
Dr. Allen stepped out for a moment, he's back now, but are there any questions for any of the elementary principals? Anything that you would like to hear a little bit more about? As I mentioned, this is really a great deal of the work that we do in the summer during, during, thank you, during our summer institute with, with the central office leadership team and the principals. Looking at our data, looking at our strategic plan and pulling these plans all together.
What's the story on that reading and then we added math? Is that still as strong and as good as when you presented it to us up at Ruggles Lane?
The intervention program?
Yes.
Uh, we're, we're certainly still working on it, so we did implement a new curriculum this year, so anytime there's a change or a shift like that, we've we've, along with the new curriculum, we actually had a shift in philosophy around, not just philosophy, but we moved to the science of reading. And so with that shift has required a lot of professional development. So I think that what you heard the principal talking about was the amount of PD that we're engaging our teachers in. And so we're not just talking about what it looks like in the classroom setting, but we're also talking at the meetings about what the shifts are that need to happen within the intervention program. So we're involving the tutors in those conversations and we're training them at the same time that we're training our teachers so they can have common and consistent language.
We still have those coaches?
We do still have coaches and intervention specialists.
What's the difference between a coach and an intervention?
Great question. So our coaches, our instructional coaches, and they primarily work with our educators, our regular educators and our special educators. And our intervention specialists are responsible for the building based data collection and working with our tutors and our paraprofessionals along with our educators. But I will say this year, because it's been such a heavy lift, they're all supporting each other very strongly, so our intervention specialists are offering some modeling in the classrooms. Our coaches are helping out with the data meetings and the data collection, so it's sort of all hands on deck right now. And our administrators are part of that all hands on deck as well. So they're heavily involved in all the meetings and everything that's happening and if you guys want to add anything, please feel free.
Well, one of the things I remember that I thought was so good was the teachers were learning some special education skills and the principals were learning skills in teaching reading. So that everybody was sort of learning. And the thing I remember was we had four categories and this was the, the rock bottom, lousy, blech in reading. And after the program was implemented, basically that category went together, went away and we just had the top three. Now, I was told later on, it didn't stay that way. Does this category now have people in it?
Uh, yeah, so I, well, we still use only three tiers. But what I will say is that one of the reasons that we shifted to a new curriculum was because we were concerned about the increase in the number of students that were falling into the tier three category, what you might be calling tier four, but yeah.
Okay. Now, we started this, Trish, where's Trish? Oh, there you are, we started this, what, about seven, eight years ago?
Yep, that sounds just about right.
Okay. Now, Pranima, do you notice that as the kids are coming up into the middle and high school that they have better reading skills than you used to see years ago? And I know it's not here, but from wherever you were. What town were you in before this?
Before this, Framingham and Tewksbury.
Framingham and where?
Tewksbury.
And Tewksbury, well, Framingham would have been lower, I would suppose. Certainly more by.
It's a really good question, if I don't look at the pandemic, which is
Yeah.
Excuse everything. I would say we were in a really good trajectory. So strengthening that early literacy, math and getting interventions early, offering preschool early, offering all of the early literacy at math schools we can. There was definitely improvement, I think we've slowed down in progress and we are hoping to be built.
Yeah, okay, how about math? It used to be that our reading was superior to math. And then maybe twenty years ago, we doubled the block on reading, is that about, no, I mean a double block on math. So that they had two, two maths to one reading. And that still didn't catch them up, but it got them just pretty much even, I think.
In the high school where we did the two blocks in sophomore year?
I, yeah, I mean absolutely, we are also considering, just look at MCAS, our bootcamp, we offered a bootcamp at the high school level for students who needed to take the retest in science.
Yeah.
So really intensive sort of support now. We're gonna do a similar model with the math coming up in the spring. I think it's just definitely about time on learning, so wherever we can grab opportunities, support kids, build up their skills, offer tutoring, it, it will help.
Are you thinking of anything this summer?
I'm definitely open to summer possibilities. You know, we're just beginning that discussion and I know that elementary has some models, but we're open to ideas for the, for the summer, the middle and high.
Good, 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 good. Okay.
Would you like to hear the middle high school plan?
I would love to hear the middle high school.
Let me, that went up. Uh, one second, Pranima, presentation.
What's ALP?
Alternative Learning Program, that's our alternative high school program.
We need to hear about that sometime.
We certainly can. Have a presentation. All right. You let me know, would you like me to move to the next screen?
So, there is a link to the improvement plan in the presentation as well. I will walk you through some of the highlights like the elementary principals did. So we have the four similar goals as elementary lined up and aligned to the strategic goals of the district, which is Quabin Pride, supporting academic growth for all students, social emotional growth and our commitment to the community. And we love our little panther, that's developed, that's on the right, as you can see is our new logo. A little bit more fiercer than elementary, but we love that. Yes. So next slide, we've got our first goal, which I will talk about in terms of Quabin Pride.
Sorry. There we go.
So Quabin Pride, these are all ongoing bullets that we are engaging in, so some of them listed as implemented or incorporated, but I would say ongoing work in all of these areas. Starting off the school year to be more streamlined in our communication and collaboration, we focused on having two smaller houses and a house structure to support a learning community that's more digestible for students and staff. And so our, our Blue House incorporates grades six, seven, eight and nine, and our Gold House incorporates grades 10, 11 and 12. And that house structure has definitely led to, you know, fun camaraderie, blue and gold and sort of who's winning and students knowing where to go to for support from staff members. We've incorporated our new QRSD branding to promote Quabin unity. We've created a weekly comprehensive staff newsletter and a monthly parent's more newsletter. I put a link to this week's newsletter, if you just want to open that up, just to show folks just an example, this is a weekly newsletter for this week that went out to staff. And if you, if you notice on here.
Gotta wait till.
Let's see, okay, there we go. Get rid of this, I can. All right.
If you scroll down here, we have some shout outs in the beginning, we walk through a weekly attendance, so our staff is aware of our student attendance in each of the grades.
Is it getting, getting any better?
I, I would say, you know, other than the medical things that are coming up, but focus on the attendance piece is definitely not to a larger awareness. So there's pockets that at the beginning of the year, we were stronger and then medically due to illnesses, went a little slow, but we're, we're coming back up. So as you can see, last week, we had a ninety one percent attendance as presence, which is pretty good during a time of, you know, winter. So the attendance is on there for staff and as you scroll down, there are dates that are quite accessible to staff to look at each day, so they know exactly what's going on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of the week and to look forward to for the next few weeks. And then there's an area of important links, so they can always access, here's the assessment calendar and our agendas coming up, our handbooks, so those are accessible links that are important for them. And I usually have a message of the week, something to think about, so this, this Sunday, as I was drinking my tea, it was you know, important reflections were coming about culture and climate and the language we use and to be really optimistic and positive towards one another. So a couple of thoughts on there. And then you'll see from our administrators in the houses, a message, house updates are on here. As you scroll down, each of the coordinators each week talk a little bit about between athletics to academia, what's.
Were those in the, in the, with the creature?
So there's our map spot and these are our master of ceremony little highlights from our two MCs at one of the games. So Mark Myble putting something interesting about athletics, so this is just a great opportunity as you have a weekly newsletter for staff to share our pride. And I think it's a real collaborative leadership effort from everybody else and we contribute each week and we share out important messages as well as things to be proud of, so links important on here, so I would say this, having an ongoing sort of PD in the week, you don't have to digest it all, but it gives staff members time to spend time each day to go through the newsletter and learn a little bit more. So I think that's definitely helped. So I think that's definitely helped in communication. It's helped in sort of bringing middle and high school together in a comprehensive way each week. And what I like to do is take from um, each week and share out to parents in the monthly smore. So little tidbits of what's going on through the weeks, sharing how parent communication was more. That's been, I've gotten some positive feedback from parents with that piece as well. So lots of information. We're hoping to maybe condense this a little bit, but I mean, great, some of the school nurse, you name it to all of, you know, um, middle school yearbook, here's what's going on, our I L T, uh, notes and agenda. NJR O T C, our guidance team, updates, adjustment counselors, you know, look. So
Great chance the school committee members could get that.
I'm happy to sure. Yeah, we've had each week I
We used to get that, what about fifteen years ago, ten, fifteen years ago? It was a newsletter, some sort came out. Didn't look as good as that one.
We had a district newsletter several years back that Chris Nozel did, but we can certainly
But I think having that information would be very helpful to us.
I think staff have reported that as well. They feel more connected and they feel they know what's going on in the school in each of the areas.
Yeah, I'm saying us too.
What's that?
Saying us too.
Agreed, agreed. Thank you. So that's an example of um, getting back to the Quab and Pride piece. Obviously, you know, the more connected and aware we are, the more pride we feel for one another. So the newsletter has definitely helped. Um, we absolutely celebrate diverse community events, including unified sports, performing arts, um, musicals, the ALP graduation. We had um, two of our students graduate in the middle of the year from ALP NJR O T ceremonies. We spoke about DECA and being in that state level competition. IB culminating political engagement, civics project showcase, many more. So there's opportunities to come together and share out and celebrate. Um, at each of our monthly faculty meeting, there's one today. Uh, we, I ask each of the chairs of the department to work with their teachers to present an instructional best practice. Today was math and we talked about uh, randomization and picking students uh, randomly. So they don't feel you know, they need to be finding a friend for a group or, you know, finding a neighbor that they want to go to work together. And some, you know, so one of our teachers, April Carter, she had a card deck today and she showed how to use cards to randomly pick and assign students of your hearts. All of the hearts go here and the diamonds go here and a really easy and non-intrusive way to to pick uh, student groupings. But we like to each month present a strategy. So that's definitely given us a little bit of awareness of instructional pieces. Um, and we like to communicate our vision of the graduate. We've had uh, assemblies for students, grade level assemblies. We are hoping to have our next assembly next month where we talk about um, our core values to kids um, and share sort of what's expected in terms of their behavior and making good choices. So those are ongoing and we hope to continue that work. So that's the first uh, Quab and Pride objective. Academic growth in order to support student achievement. Uh, the housing system I just spoke about, the blue and the gold house, um, to improve effective communication. We've also supportive interventions through increased administrative presence in classrooms. All of the administrators. We have supported informal feedback to our teachers through grows and glows. So grows an area that we found could be incorporated as a food for thought. Hey, is something missing as a teacher to think about? The glow was, hey, you're right on. And so the feedback is increased for teachers and that's definitely improved um, some of the uh, supervision informally. And of course, we go through our formal observations. Um, each house and grade level ha- is part of an SSST process and we each week look at student attendance, academic concerns and reach out to parents for support. Um, our multi-tiered interventions are used to identify, uh, address student needs. So through professional development. A tutoring program that's just up and beginning, flex block support where where students can access uh, help from teachers. Uh, our attendants um, sort of look at in terms of the houses and the boot camps when it comes to MCAS that we've begun in science and we hope to expand. Um, there is an ongoing analysis of the schedule and course catalog in order to address the diverse student needs. And we have fostered reflective instructional practices that address diverse student needs through academic and some, uh, social emotional awareness. We're also looking at expanding our course offerings and electives in the IP areas as well as the A, AP and IB course offerings. So those are being looked at and examined, what's best sort of out there in the real world. So we talked a little bit about the business aspects. Um, uh, what can be expanded, what what can we incorporate to expand learning for our students? So we're
What are you, what are you thinking about adding to the uh, AP and the IB?
So uh, potentially combining, you know, as, I mean, these are ongoing discussions, uh, could be combine an AP and IB course together. So that would give students um, accessibility to have another elective. So some of the APs and IB course offerings, for example, biology, they, the curriculum is very, the standards are quite aligned. If we pull those students together um, into one hybrid course, you know, that would allow one more opening for an expanded course for students. So that's a thought process, you know, not completely identified yet, but we're looking into that.
Do you add another science?
Sorry?
Would you, what would you like to add? Would you add another science?
I'd love to add science. You're talking to a science teacher. So yes, hundred percent. Robotic, you name it, anatomy, physiology, like internal, you know, robotics going further with physics and the real world applications. Yes, love to do that. So so the sky's the limit and we're going to see what's out there in the world and what would be beneficial for kids. Um, in our P E A, um, as you know, it's a requirement for IB students. Uh, Senator Goby just visited us last week and she connected with our students. That was very powerful, our Sandy Hook promise. I believe school committee heard about that piece. So supporting all of the initiatives where uh, students really internally look at something that they believe in and reach out to the community for support and awareness. So we'd love to continue that work in terms of academic growth. Social emotional growth. Um, we are utilizing our panorama survey to guide our cell initiatives. Each um, each faculty meeting, we also like to, I usually do this, but model a mindfulness um, activity or strategy for the teachers to utilize themselves or they can utilize the students to help them decrease their own stress, um, to be more self-aware, be uh, you know, just basically working on some of their management skills as well. And so that I believe, I I've seen a lot more engagement in the staff in the meetings and they've, you know, given me good feedback on that piece. And obviously that can equate to students. So when teachers are more mindful and peace, you know, that trickles right into the student. So we want to continue that growth.
What's an example of something that you've taught them?
So box breathing, Dr. Allen. So do- box breathing is a technique where you, you know, you've taken a deep breath through your nose in about five seconds and the key is to hold your breath when you take it in through your nose. So once you breathe in, hold for five seconds and then you breathe out and release. And so the holding aspects allows for increased capacity in your lungs and oxygen to go straight to your brain when you breathe out. So that sort of combination is scientifically proven to decrease stress and um, increase self-awareness. And so when you do that for even two minutes, to calm your body into focus, that allows you to regenerate and move forward. So we did box breathing techniques with the faculty and they were hesitant at first and they were all engaged within thirty seconds. It was great. So that's an example of uh, a quick mindfulness.
Okay, thank you.
Um, in terms of the cell curriculum for kids, we are continuing our work on Wednesdays. So our cell Wednesdays through the ripple effects curriculum is continuing and we've really been um, devoted to saving that Wednesday and really protecting it from anything else. So we've had each Wednesday um, for cell flex block for our students. And we've implemented newly learned strategies and protocols uh, from C R L with purpose. We've um, I believe my colleagues talked about Dr. Holly and outrageous love, student discourse and engagement. Um, and the three signature strategies from last year, which is the warm welcome, engaging activity and optimistic closure. We are continuing those strategies for our staff. Um, we've had ongoing referrals to care solace to support families, students and parents and accessing resources outside of school. So we've had several families who've been um, supported by that initiative. We want to continue that work. So that's a little bit on snapshot of social emotional growth.
I still don't get this outrageous love. Could you?
Yeah, so outrageous love is sort of um, taking students from from where exactly they are. So it doesn't matter if you are having challenges at home or you're having the best environment possible at home. When you come to school, you're all equal. And we're going to give you the 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 greatest love experience possible. So we're going to welcome you with open arms. We're going to treat you equally. We're going to provide the supports you need to have access to curriculum because we love you. That's our outrageous love, accepting where you are, building in supports and and just coming on in and welcoming to kids to school. That makes sense.
Yeah, um helping build kids, like taking them up. I guess I Yeah, okay.
Fancy words, kind of a, a way to get people to think about sort of why we're working here, you know.
Well, it works very well from that standpoint. I think it overstates what love is significantly, but that's okay. That's just my opinion. But it sounds like a very good
I think it's it's the lens of equity, sort of treating students
Oh, that's a wonderful way to put it.
That's Dr. Holly's phrase of reminding ourselves of that, the work that we do. Um, in terms of our last uh, goal, which is commitment to the community. Um, we've developed a coaching and evaluation calendar that makes sure that staff um, are receiving supervision and ongoing feedback. We've implemented collaborative learning box through the, with the district um, to to guide some of our practices and high quality education. We've pursued and strengthened and increased number of community partnerships to further our non-traditional learning opportunities for all students, including internships, dual enrollment, workplace learning, et cetera. Uh, we've revised school-based mentoring and QRSD mentoring program in general for all educators new to the district. We have supportive collaborative uh, budgetary discussions that are focused on equity and maximizing student achievement. And we've showcased Quab and successes in various areas through our newsletters and um, to parents and staff. So that's our commitment to the community. And I believe that brings me to the end of the four goals. And I will take any questions you may have or comments. That's what's
How many?
Middle and high school.
Jenna, do you have a question?
Oh, I just want to say I think that looks fantastic.
That does. How many IB and AP courses combined do we have now?
You've got me in that. This is a technical question. Um, I have to park that question because I don't get, I don't want to give you the wrong answer. I can get that back to you though. IB, AP combined courses?
No, no, how many?
Separated.
One, the other, with a grand total?
Uh, I would have to look into that.
Do you know? Colleen?
Not off the top. Yeah, I don't know.
About a dozen?
Oh, yeah.
Probably.
Yeah.
Yep.
Third ballpark.
I think we offer many, but we don't, aren't able to run them all every year. So we were on a um, somewhat of an alternating schedule where some years, some of the AP courses run and other years, the I, the other courses run. It's, it's more challenging than ever to maintain all of those courses due to our declining enrollment. So that's why you see sometimes when we present the um, student enrollment data to pol- to the policy subcommittee, you see some small numbers in those courses. Um, that, you know, it's, it's again, just because of our student populations.
I'm thinking when we started to encourage them, I think we only had two or three, didn't we? And they were just AP, that was before IB. Does that sound about right, Peggy?
I think you're right.
Yeah, so there has been movement positively and success there. Yeah, that's good. Uh, I think that the, these are going to be all available to school committee members?
Yes, sir. We'll have them for Thursday night's meeting.
Okay, it's two days from now.
They're in, they're already in the school committee drive. So everyone who accesses the um, documents from the drive have them available there.
What drive?
The, on the computer.
Okay. Now, the academic guide, I know we're going to be waiting on that. What are, what are we thinking? Uh, are we going to have much of a way of changes there? Are we looking or what?
Well, we are uh, exploring a possible um, schedule change at the middle high school. And um, as you know, that's the subject of collective bargaining. So we are currently have begun bargaining with the um, QR T A. And so we felt that um, we'd like to try to bring that to a close before we um present changes that may or may not be necessary depending on where we end with the schedule
Okay.
negotiations.
Yeah, I looked at my, I looked at my calendar here. I think the first Monday in March is going to be okay. Does that work?
Well, yes, we, we would like to aim for that if possible.
Okay, Jenna, it's okay with you?
I think so, yeah.
Peggy? Did, I, I don't know how much of that you caught, but they're looking at some changes in the high school of the program and it's going to be on reworking some things and they need the QR T A and so forth. So they want to meet with us again on that. So I'm saying the first Monday in in March. Is that okay with you?
Sounds great.
Okay. All right.
Six.
So is that what we have for tonight?
Yes.
We done did it then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we're adjourned.